Okay, it being after 6:00 PM, I will call this November 9th meeting of the Board of Selectment to order. If you please all join me in saluting the flag. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so approve some minutes here. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the August 3rd, 2021 minutes. That was an executive session.
That was just you and me, right?
That was, uh, yes, you and I, so you'll have to make a motion.
Motion to approve.
And I'll second, all in favor.
Aye.
And then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from 10/18/2021. That's also an executive session minutes.
So moved. Second.
Uh, motion been made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And I abstain from that one. And then October 26th, we have a regular session and an executive session minutes to approve.
Motion to approve.
And I will second. Um, motion made, seconded, all in favor of approving those. Aye. So those are all set. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number 10 for $355,252.18, general warrant number 1022 for $350,862.29, school warrant number 1020 for $75,716.20, and CDBG warrant number 1021 for $45,476.57.
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, so I don't see any financial items to discuss at this point. Um, but they're coming, right? We got free cash numbers and issues to discuss. Um, okay, old business. Trevor's here for the, we're talking about swales and...
Yeah, I'll just give you a general update if you don't mind.
Yep.
So, um, first of all, good news, uh, the FEMA grant that was, uh, that we've been working on for, since May, uh, came through, so we've got, that, that one is getting signed up on by the state. Um, so it'll be $6,000 coming in anytime now, right, Ashley?
Yeah.
So all that paperwork is done. That was for the vaccine clinic, so you've printed money for that, and we got reimbursed 100% on that through FEMA, so that was good. Second, um, we, uh, now have, I don't want to announce to the public, we have COVID tests available, so that if you are feeling unwell, call the, um, and you want to get tested, call the Board of Health, and we will arrange to have a test kit delivered to your house. Um, if you're a close contact and it's been over three days, and you want the peace of mind, same thing, call the Board of Health, don't come, call, it's, uh, 508-867-0201. Um, we secured that through, you know, we've been keeping track of the CARES Act money, and the CARES Act money has an expiration date, which was August, uh, October 29th. Um, so there were funds left in the CARES Act money, we had been paying public health nurse for contact tracing out of that. We're shifting, we're shifting our contact, we're going to keep Cheryl on as public health nurse for other communicable diseases and things like our, our flu clinics, but we're shifting our contact tracing to Lester, um, because we're partners again with another $300,000 grant, um, and they will pick up the contact tracing for us. So we won't be getting the bills for that. We'll still get bills from the public health nurse. I'm remiss, I just contacted, contacted Sutton today to get a new contract for Cheryl, um, because we're on a yearly basis, you wanting to renew, that's fine, that should be coming, um, and we'll just go, I, I'm unclear who signs it first, whether they sign it first or you do, I don't care, but we'll get it done and get that through. But, but having that secondary grant is going to be a big plus, we're going to have access to, um, an epidemiologist, hopefully in the future, if we can, if we can hire one, um, and two social workers, and that's over three years, similar to the grant for the health inspector, three years, we don't have to pay anything. So that's a savings realized, and we've, we've folded that savings back into the request to, uh, for the budget reduction.
So that's the $300,000 grant for?
That's for the region.
Okay.
Yeah, so like, so like Mackenzie's, Mackenzie is our health inspector, she services Lester Hardware, New Braintree Berry, um, while Holden has their own, but we have, we have health inspector for three, um, for three years. Uh, the feeling is, is that one of the things the pandemic has taught DPH is that, um, local boards of health aren't funded well, because they don't, you know, nobody's expecting this, right? So, um, and when you have a problem with, uh, no health inspector, none to be had, it's good to have this regional, regional effort, so, um, you know, it's a, it's a perfect fit for our town, um, and, you know, we've used her quite a bit. Um, that was that, let me see.
I didn't mean to sidetrack you.
No, the, the rest of the, I, I spoke with Dale, you know, we had to make some decisions about the rest of the CARES Act money, or it was gone, so what we've done is, uh, and I spoke to Ashley about it as well, we've purchased some laptops, we've purchased some backup hard drives, some wireless mice, um, things like that, to use up the rest of that grant money, so we don't lose, we didn't lose it, and now, um, we'll, I haven't, I haven't had a chance, because of, you know, I had to, I had to set up a corporate account, a municipal account, the whole thing, so, um, but we'll put together a memo, we'll run it out of your office, and, you know, if the library needs extra computing power, they can use it, I mean, I just don't, we don't have any ownership to it, I just wanted to get somewhere, wasting that money. Um, and that was how, that was the approach with the tests. And now the ask. So the swales, the swale project, um, the last time you and I spoke, Dale, we thought it would be prudent to wait till spring to go out to bid, just because there's no money to do anything anyways, and by the time, you know, you get the bids, they're going to have to be rebid, so it'd be just a waste of money. However, um, you know, Ethan Malad has really taken point on some of these ARPA funds and what you can and cannot do, and, you know, we work closely with CMR PC, um, and the local boards of health, and a regional effort, and we feel, we feel that we can pay for the swale project in its entirety out of those ARPA funds, that it is a stormwater issue, right? It's, it's controlling stormwater, I mean, we had to do a stormwater report for DEP. Um, so, you know, I'm making the, I'm making the argument that, you know, let's, let's do that.
And how much was that?
So the, the engineer is 14,000, right, from, from start to finish, and that's, that, there was a question of would they cover engineering costs, but, but my argument would be that DEP is mandating that we have an engineer oversee the thing, so I, I'm saying yes.
Mm-hmm.
The, the initial estimate from him is, could put the bid between 50 and $60,000, but it just depends on who you get to look at it, and fuel costs and everything else, you know, you're really, really in the guessing game.
Yeah, so that's 50 to 60 in addition to the 14, so we're looking at about 75.
It could be, right? It, it could be lower, it could be 40, I mean, if you get the, you know, I'm thinking of, my only experience, other experiences with the Greens, and we had, you know, those bids were, it was a pretty big disparity in those bids, so, you know, we'd go out to bid and see where we're at, and we can make a determination from there, but that money's available, it's the first one, you know, the next one will come in, um, and it is applicable, it's an applicable project, because it's stormwater runoff.
So this wouldn't come out of taxpayer money, it would come out of that?
Yeah, the ARPA funds, which I think we were, we were looking at the ARPA funds to defray the cost of the sewer plant project.
Right, yep. But this is a good, this would be a good project.
Yeah, there's 400 and something, I think the first group was 402,000.
Yeah, and then you get another, you should get another four or more in the next group.
Right.
You got till 2024 to, to, to deal with it. I think the next group comes out in the spring, is that right?
Uh...
Yeah, I think it's...
Yeah, I think so. I got a DLS notification the other day.
Do, do we have this money now, available?
Is it in?
Yeah, some of it. Yeah, that first one is in, I believe.
Yeah, it's like 423,000, I think is...
Oh, so we, we have it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it something we can have him go to bid because we have funds available?
I would propose that...
Wait till spring or do it now? Can it be done now?
Well, it depends if you can get somebody, right? Like, that's the thing.
But we need it engineered first, right?
It is engineered, we, we, I've had...
Oh, so you want the 14 to cover what we already spent on engineering?
No, 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 so the engineering would be from bid to completion, right? He's going to go through the bid process with us, he'll be on site, um, I think there's 10 site visits, and then the paperwork for DEP at the end.
Okay.
Right, so where we're at in terms of, the, the only thing I need is money, I mean, I've got my DEP number, I've got my, I went to Concom and, and worked that with them, so they're on board, um, and so now it's just a question of, I mean, I don't, for me, it's fine, we can wait till spring, that's okay, I mean, if, if I can get George to, to, to do it, I mean, snow's going to fly.
Tina said that we're not getting any snow, no, that was Brandon, said we're not getting snow this year, so...
Yeah, you know...
Let's go with what he said.
Sure.
You know...
But I, you know, I don't want to get in a position where we bid it too early and then have to rebid, usually, I mean, I assume the bids are for 90 days, can't be for 180 per construction, right?
Probably not now in this climate, you know, with the gas prices the way they are, and, you know, it could, even, even 90 days is a long time with the, the way it's going.
Do they have to be dug up and redone, or just cleaned out?
No, dug up and redone, re, re leveled.
Okay.
New material, and we're going to, instead of putting in riprap, we're going to put in the, um, we're going to seed it, so it can be maintained and mowed.
Okay.
Like, the, the problem isn't the initial build, it wasn't riprap, I mean, they put fieldstone in, like, you know?
Yeah.
16-inch rocks.
Rocks.
And so when you, you know, you can't mow it, you can't, you can't do anything with it, and when you, and when you weed whacking it, all the stuff goes in there, creates a bed for...
Right, yeah.
And plus the plowing situation over the course of time...
Coming in there, yeah.
...pushed it, so, um, this will straighten it out, I mean, we're obligated to do the project, there's no, you know, thankfully, DEP hasn't been fining us for it, but we're obligated to do it, um, but we have this opportunity to do it at no expense to the taxpayer, or at least that, that's, you know, as, as long as we're claiming that it's a stormwater issue, which it is, because it's draining...
It's absolutely a stormwater issue.
...stormwater, that's what those whales are for.
Yeah, to drain it up.
Who makes that determination?
Well, DEP asked us specifically for stormwater runoff reports for, which have been handed in.
Yeah, so they give you a list of, of, of things that you can use the money for.
Broadband.
So if stormwater management is one of them, this is stormwater management, we just, we say that that's what it is, and I don't think they're going to give us a problem on the back end, once it's done, they would give you a problem on the front end, but...
I mean, I don't think you're going to see, I mean, it's a lot of money, there's a 351 pounds in the Commonwealth, I don't think this is...
Well, you have documentation from the DEP that they're calling it stormwater stuff, so, but as long as we have some kind of paperwork to fall back on, I would see no problem with...
Yeah, so what do you want us to do, just...
So, I mean, it's, I mean, let's have a conversation, do you want to, do you want to wait till spring? Do you want, I mean, I guess I'm looking for, if you give me the green light, to go and go out to bid, I mean, I'll ask George if, you know, his thoughts, he's the engineer from, from the beginning.
Yeah.
Um, if he wants to wait until April, and we'll wait till April, that's fine, right? You know, the money's there, um, and there'll be more coming, but it, but it'd be nice to have that, I don't have to worry about where that money's coming from, or...
Yeah, so why don't we just set off $75,000?
Yeah.
We'll set off $75,000 of ARPA money specifically for this project.
Probably, yeah.
Um, but yeah, so then whatever we don't use stays with ARPA for the sewer project.
Yeah, we're not pulling money out into an account, we're just being billing against it, the way we did with, with CARES, so, you know, if it comes in...
I'm good with that, yeah.
If it comes in at 30 or 40, fantastic, we move forward, but, um, go from there.
Would that give us enough, I mean, to bid it now? Would that give us enough to hold till spring? I mean, prices may go up or may not, hopefully not, uh, I, I hate to wait on stuff.
Well, what would it hurt to bid now?
It wouldn't hurt.
Well, I don't know if the engineer's available, right? So his availability's an issue, um, you know, uh...
Tell him to do it. Just tell him to do it.
John?
Yeah, it works exactly like that.
I'm going to send John over here, and you're going to have to deal with him.
Right, um, so, you know, it took me a while to find an engineer, so I don't, you know, um, it took me like two years to find an engineer. Uh, so the downfall would be, you bid it too early, snow flies, and nobody wants to get up, you're going to get up on that cap, and, you know, you can't take heavy equipment up there, it can't be too heavy, because...
Well, why don't you consult with the engineer, ask him if he thinks we should do it now or then, and then we'll just block...
Well, as long as we're on the same page that we can draw from that, I'll contact him tomorrow, find out where we're at, I'll keep you informed when we go out to bid, obviously, you've got, you know, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Yep.
Go from there?
Perfect.
We leave it at that, go out to bid, or ask a contractor one, and say, you think you could do it in this amount of time, before you get three bids.
Yeah, well, you still need the bids, that's the problem, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Still need three, right? So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll just go, if, if it happens in the spring, it happens in the spring, I'm not, you know, been working on it for five years, I, you know, six more months isn't going to kill me.
Yeah, well, I would say do the best you can, Trevor.
That's what we always tell you can do.
Well, you're on par with setting aside the money.
Just give me money, that's all I want.
Doing everybody else.
But that's, I mean, that's, that's, that's something that's off the docket, and we don't have to worry about, you know, right?
Yep, all right, thanks.
Cool, thank you.
All right, so, on to new business, um, a discharge of a lien.
CMR PC, yeah, it's another one, they're going to be coming in quickly.
All right, um, yeah, $16,000 discharge lien for a project they did in town, entertain a motion to execute that.
So moved. Second.
I'll make the second, all in favor?
Aye. Does that include the both of them?
Yeah, it's the same discharge, it just needs to be signed twice, yeah.
Can you get the rest of that right?
Yeah, I got it.
All right, Clark and Green agreement for senior center rep...
I have the copy here, um, at the Center for CMR PC, they're going to be the contractor that takes care of the senior center for us.
Do we know what they were going to do, actually, because there were a couple of projects over there, the roof, the tiles, the flooring?
They're going to be doing the roof, and they're going to be doing the flooring, so it'll be all one level, um, and if there's any funding left, there's a couple other small things that they wanted to do.
Well, no, they were, in, in the beginning, they were going to do new, uh, ceiling tiles.
I don't know that that's happening, I know that the roof and the floor were both the main concerns.
Yeah, it really doesn't say any of that in this paperwork, but I was just curious what they were doing.
Well, you got to do the roof before you can do any ceiling tiles anyway.
I know, I know.
All right, I'll change.
This is, um, this is, is this the signature page?
Yeah.
All right, well, entertain a motion to, um, engage the consultant services, or sign the agreement, I guess.
So moved. Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Since we're talking about the senior center.
Yeah.
They have the, um, the water mains leaking, and it runs through the neighbor's property to the back of the building somewhere, so they'd have to do a lot of digging in the neighbor's property to fix it, but, um, I guess Eddie Tebow was over there today, and they came up with, him and Jamie from Water, came up with the idea of digging in the front, just on the sidewalk, and changing where it comes into the building to in front, and they go up over the ceiling tiles, they come in the building, then they go up and over the ceiling tiles to the back of the building, and they'll keep it on our property, and it'd be a lot less digging and a lot less cost. I don't know what Eddie Tebow was going to charge, I guess it's by the hour, but, um, Jason Benoit and Jamie could probably do most of it on the outside, they just need a plumber for the inside, so we just don't know which direction to go in, because I don't know how much Eddie Tebow's going to charge, because of how long it'll take.
Eddie Tebow charges a lot of money.
Well, we can use highway, so we could either, we do it one way or the other, it's just, it's...
Right. Yeah. I had talked with Michelle about inside, when, when you go inside, you got to put the shut-off there and the meter right in that room in there, and you can just box it in, so it's not unsightly, that's the sewing, is that the sewing room, or what, that front kind of office there?
There's two or three of them in the front, isn't there?
Yeah, yeah.
Whichever one it comes in.
Yeah. So we need to secure a plumber?
Yeah, Troy's going to go look at it, and let us know what it'll entail, and see who's got time to do it.
Yeah.
So, he may have time to do it, and he'd probably give us a decent cost on it, and the assistant plumber could inspect it, plumbing inspector could inspect it, so...
Okay. Yeah, that sounds, sounds more reasonable than digging everywhere.
Yeah, we should have decided whether we want to have Eddie Tebow do it, or if we want Highway and Water to try to do it together.
What do they say? Do they think they can do it?
They can do it, yeah.
Jason would be all for it, he said he would be okay with it.
Yeah, then why, well, why not?
Yeah, that's why we got to talk about it here.
Yeah, so when, when that comes into the building, they have to go below the frost, right?
I would imagine.
So that means you're going to have to open up the floor inside the senior center in that corner, so there's that too. You're going to have to dig up a four-foot by four-foot hole in that corner, if that's where it comes in, concrete, so it's not just piping it for plumbing and connecting, there's work inside that's going to be done also, uh, which, I don't know if, I'm sure the plumber could handle that, but if need be, we can have Highway do some of that also. I'll volunteer their services, whether, whether they know it or not, but, I mean, they have the equipment, you know, saws and hammers and whatnot, uh, that way you wouldn't be paying the plumber's cost for that either, but, because I don't believe there's any, that's a slab, there's no basement under any of that, so you got to think of that too on the inside, and the plumber would have to get his work done first, so there's something to hook to, like that day, you'd have to get from end to end, where it comes in, in the back, which I've never seen, it's going to come in the back corner on the northeast, northwest side.
Yep, but it is a, um, suspended ceiling throughout, so...
Right, they can go up and over, and that would just be plastic pipe, I would think, unless you're commercial, you have to do, might have to cooperate.
I'm not a plumber.
Commercial might have to be, or municipal, I don't know, he would know, Troy would, the plumber would know that.
Right, so, motion of some kind?
Do we need to okay using highway and then an applicable plumber, or what?
Yeah, I guess, what, what's the motion that...
I move to, I move to ask the Highway Superintendent to coordinate with the Water Department to, um, move the meter to the front of the building, well, to the Forest Street side of the building, and, um, we'll have to go out, we might have to go out for bids, I don't know, it's an emergency, right? So we'll see what the plumbing inspector says on it, so that's my motion.
Second.
No, I'm making seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, next, we have a request for resources, a Christmas parade. The NB Helps Group, Katie By Isaac looking to...
So December 4th is out, that one is gone?
Yeah, it's going to be...
12/5, Sunday.
Yeah, Sunday, the 5th, from 5:30 to 7:00, I guess Spencer's doing theirs on the 4th, so she was asked to change it.
Uh, yep. Um, so the annual Christmas parade, 12/5, from 5:30 to 7:00, Northbrook Field Elementary School parking lot, uh, then it would come down, what mean evidently, to the center, like it does every year, yeah.
Do we know what they're doing in the center, are they, are they meeting at the park, or...
They meet up at the school when they come down.
I know, but are they doing anything downtown?
I'm not sure.
Probably, I would imagine.
Yeah.
They always do, there'll be something down there.
Santa Claus or anything, or...
Yeah, we'll find out, they just said, um, um, they just have to contact the chief and let them know.
Right, yeah, they'll probably use John's corner.
Sure. We'll light it up for him.
All right, so, let's see, I got nothing else, anything else we got, new business wise? Um, do we need to talk about these?
Oh, yeah, the stuff that's coming, uh, if you want to run through and question them.
Uh, so Sheila wants to put in front of the town meeting a vote to rescind Article 4, Part 2 of the June 4th annual town meeting, um, the portion that rescinds and appropriates, um, the cruiser lease of 26,755.21, the air tank lease, 29,032.61, and the fire truck lease of 85,000, and transfer from the lease stabilization, sum of 31,000, for the fire truck lease, from the fire personnel stabilization, 49,000, to the truck lease, from police personnel stabilization, 4,219 for the lease, 29,000 to air packs, and 26 for the cruiser, so taking it all out of that greenbelt stabilization.
Mm-hmm, to pay all the leases.
Okay, um, because we don't have that in the general right now?
No.
That's not part of the...
That's not part of the...
...number that we...
No.
Um, so then she also has on here, rescinding the 76,713, um, that we transferred from group insurance to the school, uh, at the adjourned town meeting, and transfer the sum of 76,000 back to the group insurance, so from the school back to the group insurance?
Yeah, yep.
Yep, for sure.
So those are going to become warrants?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, Article 1 is the Water Department wants to transfer from retained earnings for the superintendent's sick leave buyback, um, need to do that. Article 2, see if the town will vote to increase the penalty for owners who failed to license their dogs after June 1st, $10, um, in addition to the regular license, what is it now?
I think it's $5.
Just $5?
Eight, no, I think it's...
Eight's the original license, then there's a late fee, right?
I think it was $5.
$5 for late.
Yeah, $5, yeah.
Um, and then Article 3, to increase, uh, the fine for people who fail to license their dogs after September 1st to $50. We have a lot of people not paying that at all, they're just not paying, they're not licensing, they're not paying, just, so we'll put that in front of them, unless there's some objection.
Nope, I'm good with that. Nope, I'm good with that.
I think it's in line with surrounding towns too. She did some research on the fees in surrounding towns, so it's not out of.
Well, she sent letters out to a lot of these delinquent people. She's got thousands of dollars that have come back that she's recouped for the town.
Oh, did they pay you then?
Well, yeah.
A lot of them are.
A lot of them are.
Yeah.
Some of them she's got more, you know, hence the second fine by September, so that's.
Yeah, I mean, well, you need some kind of a bite in it anyway.
Right, yep.
So Article Four is a zoning bylaw proposed change, which I think is the same as before, no?
They're defining what adult entertainment and drive-through operations are.
Okay, so that's a definitional thing?
Yeah.
Article Five is to amend the zoning bylaws, establishing a new district known as Business General Two. So there's a whole bunch of language there for that. Uh, Article Six would be to amend the zoning map, uh, to include that business district. Article Seven, zoning change, to amend the map as follows. Change the R sixty-six district portion of the property at Two Westbrookfield Road to R eleven. At present, the property is zoned R eleven to a depth of two hundred feet. This means the entire five acres would be R eleven.
That's Dwali's house up on top of the hill, the built way back.
Yep.
He has two different zones on his property. And the only way he can put his in-law apartment in is to have it zoned R eleven.
Right.
Because in sixty-six, you can't.
You can't do that.
Do that. And it only affects his five point, uh, whatever acres, uh.
Yeah.
So that he can do his thing. We've gone round and round with this, uh.
With John Poocher as the zoning enforcement. I remember having a meeting with him about it too.
And the other thing is to bring business in town. It's a parcel down on the East Brookfield Road. Uh, we just wanna make it zoned so that if a business wants to come to town, we've, the planning board went through all the butters and everything, and they agreed to what this change is and, and with the setback and everything, so that, uh, that should fly. Uh, we had that meeting three weeks ago and, uh.
R eleven's more beneficial to business? Or are we talking?
Uh, no, that's the BG one. That's the one up.
Yeah.
The R eleven only affects, uh, the Dwali land.
Oh, okay. Uh, let's see. Article Eight, there's another zoning amendment. Change the existing R thirty district on the southwest side of Westbrookfield Road and Brookfield Road. Um, that looks like another double zone parcel, right?
Yep.
To a distance of?
Yep.
All right. Article Nine is to see if the board will trans, or the town will transfer the sum of eighteen from available funds to the general insurance account. What, um, what available funds are we, do we have?
Uh, that's part of the figures that Sheila.
From the free cash type?
Yeah.
Funds?
Yeah.
Okay. Article Ten, from free cash, the sum of five thousand to the library general repair maintenance account for, uh, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning contract repairs.
That one she did submit. I put it on there, but I did tell her that it's probably not gonna happen. So we can take it off if you want. She did talk to the friends at the library to see if they could help cover the cost of the increase in price. And then when we set the budget for next year, she will need more money.
Okay.
Do you guys, if you wanna leave it on there or not? It's not, it's not figured into the deficit, so.
Yeah, and we have a, facing a huge shortfall, so. Um, and then Article Eleven, I don't know, can happen, that's, um, transfer five thousand for tree warden salary, four thousand for the tree warden, one thousand for the assistant tree warden. Don't know that we have it. Um, Article Twelve, raise and appropriate borrower, transfer fifty-five thousand for the highway pickup truck. Yeah, that's a no. Um, and Thirteen, proposed a hundred and eighty thousand for the mower, highway mower.
Do you want me to just take off Articles Ten through Thirteen?
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to, we just don't see, we don't have any money.
Yeah.
We're in a huge budget shortfall, and I don't see any money materializing for that. Unfortunately.
Well, didn't we tell the tree warden that he would get that when we did his negotiation last year?
Yeah, we, as a board, we, um, approved that. But if it didn't get appropriated at town meeting, did we do it after town meeting?
I don't know.
I think we must've done it after town meeting, otherwise it would've gone into the budget.
Yeah.
Proposal. But if we don't have the money to fund it, that's our problem.
Yeah.
We can't. Unless.
Is there any place we can transfer it from or to or? Well, I think.
I can transfer.
Real trail. Oh, John's conflicted now. Street lighting?
Yeah, we can't do, both hot topics.
He's kind of nervous too.
You know, if it's acceptable for everybody, we could wait until the spring and see what's left in the, in the budget and, and go from there. And then actually set it as a line item for the next year's budget, but I think we should maybe wait and see. Or I do have some flexibility in my budget, um, as long as nothing happens to the computers or anything.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do that? Why don't we wait until the spring and see where we're at with some of the line items that we have? And if it doesn't look like we're going to be able to expend them, um, you know, if we have an overage.
Yep. Well, I'm just saying, you know, we put a lot on Jason for the trees, with his highway thing and, but.
Yep.
It's, you know, it's understandable.
I agree.
Kinda look out for everybody, so.
Yeah, but it wasn't appropriated, and that's a pay item, so I think.
How do we miss that? Unless it came up after the meeting.
It had to come up after the meeting, otherwise it would've gone into the, um, the numbers to be appropriated. Um, I don't specifically have a memory of when we talked about it.
Yeah, I can look up the executive session and see when it was.
All right.
It wasn't appropriated, however you slice it, so.
Right, yeah.
Uh, we can wait till spring and see how things go, and then we can make sure it gets in the budget for next year.
Yeah.
Or at least gets proposed.
Yep.
All right. Anything else we got? I don't see anything else on my agenda. Anything?
For me?
Yeah.
How long do I have?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds? No, I just wanna thank the police department for, uh, putting the caution sign up for the rail trail over here. Uh, I think it slowed some people down, but there are people that speed. I also wanna thank them for putting the cruiser in different spots in town. I did ask them to, you know, watch the roads and everything. They've been up both ends of town. They've been over here on Elm Street quite a few times. I don't know if they've stopped anybody or given tickets. I haven't talked to them. But sometimes just the, uh, seeing the cruiser in strategic spots slows people down. Uh, we do have a speeding issue in town that I wish we didn't have, 'cause somebody's gonna get hurt just crossing Main Street with, with people coming, you know, I know it's a hot place, everybody crosses when they get out their cars, but we need people to slow down, uh, in town, all over town.
That white electrician van.
Uh, that one is, is awful, so if you see that.
But it's not just, it's not just our town, the speeding is a.
The ninety-six mail truck?
Yeah.
He flies, passes on, it passes on double lines. I think, he's crazy.
But it might not be, might not be Northbrook Field residents, some of these people. I mean, it's the nature of.
But the speed limit, within an eighth of a mile of the center of town, if you look all around, the speed limit's twenty-five. Coming this way, this way, up the road, it's twenty-five. It's not forty-five. So unless we need to make bigger signs with flashing lights and everything, speed bumps, you know, we, we, people just need to use their head and, uh, slow the heck down. Uh, you'd hate to see somebody get, get hurt, uh, especially, you know, now we're getting into, it's dark out earlier with daylight savings. You're still gonna have people walking, uh, crossing the roads and everything. Uh, another thing also is the rail trail, and I know this is my thing and whatever, but pick up after your horse or pick up after your dog. Because we can just as easily, as we've allowed horses on there, the rules do say the owner must, uh, pick up after their horse. Uh, I personally don't like stepping in stuff that I don't need to step in, and I'm not gonna move it because it's not mine. But, uh, you know, people wanna use it. I wish, I hope everybody can use it, but people aren't gonna start using, keep using it if they have to walk through a mess, uh, every time they go down on the trail. Uh, most people are good. Uh, my wife and I walk a section of it or two every day with the dog, and lately I've been moving someone else's dog mess when I see it. Right now it's hard to see them all with the leaves, uh, but I do take care of my dog, uh, when he does his thing, and I just wish other people would do the same. Uh, I'm putting up, I don't know if you've walked it at all, but I'm covering where the locks are on the poles, uh, with a sheet of plywood, uh, for the winter, keep the leaves and snow out of there, so we can get at the locks and everything. It is a work in progress. They are functional. They're pressure-treated plywood. They don't look beautiful, but they're functional. Uh, they kinda match the poles, and after a while, maybe we can get somebody to, uh, stain them and polyurethane them, but I need to get them on first. Uh, my trail crew did the last gates down on Brick Yard and down in the Gordon's backyard last Saturday, and, uh, I'm just waiting to get the, the top part painted, and, and we'll get those on, uh, before the winter, so. It's coming along. Uh, people are enjoying it. We put riprap in the brook, uh, down between Ward Street and Orchard Road. You know that spot down there. Uh, it's kinda a little tricky with tractors and stuff. Uh, but, you know, we, we work with.
Stat wide.
Yeah.
You can do it.
We worked with, with the, the great crew that I have, and, uh, they actually went the, through the week, I dropped a few loads of the riprap and, and a couple of guys, people went down, guys and women, uh, went down and, uh, took care of, of the rest of it. So that's done for the winter. Uh, there's a couple of the projects. I am in the process of making some benches. Hopefully, uh, this weekend, if I get the material, we wanna put some seats, you know, along the trail if we can, so that if you get tired or you just wanna sit and take a break or whatever, uh, a friend of mine does, has a wood, uh, a sawmill at his house, and he's gonna make me some slabs, and hopefully, uh, we can set a couple of benches. They're gonna be really nice, wood benches, uh, not something you buy at the hardware store. Rustic is what I think we're gonna call them, so. That's it for the railroad.
Excellent.
Slow down and walk if you can.
All right. Anything?
Public comment period? I'm good.
Yep, all right.
I don't have.
Yep, so, um, open for public comment?
Um.
Yep.
Okay. Hi. Uh, my name is Joanne Carey, and I live in Northbrook Field. Um, I don't know how long I, I have here. I'm just, I'm gonna try to be as brief as possible.
I try that all the time too. Doesn't always work.
Doesn't work?
You do not.
I'm gonna read too, because it's, uh, better if I do, I won't stop babbling. For the past few years, when I go to the Northbrook Field Library, I have noticed on the, on the display in the front that all of the books are of one political opinion only. In my opinion, there should at least be political parity, and there are many wonderful conservative books. I do not want to ban leftist books. I just want there to be conservative books equally, so the library has, has parity. Um, I know I, I made up some papers for you. It spelled out the freedom to read and the library bill rights. Um, this one kind of encapsulates everything, I think, and, and, so I'll just read a little bit of it. Librarians in public libraries may be tempted to express fondness for one political party in dislike for the other. Whether such expression is intentional or benign, it may convey a perceived bias to patrons and to the community that the library, that the library is for or against a certain candidate, party, what have you. Uh, such expression may come in the form of biased book displays, such as exhibiting positive books about one, uh, party while displaying only negative or even none about the other, which is a situation going on in our library. Bias can also be expressed in the collection, such as books about one candidate or political party disproportionately outweighing the library's holdings. Uh, as tempting as steering the public toward a particular political party or candidate may be, it is imperative that public librarians do not give in to these desires. Public librarians are public servants and must remain politically impartial as to not appear to use their public position to forward the interests of a specific party. Uh, doing so alienates patrons who have opposing views and makes them feel marginalized. Political inclusiveness should be one of the main goals for public libraries. Librarians are ethically bound to observe political neutrality.
Now, have you brought this up to the librarian?
Yes, yes. We've been talking about it. Um, I went to one of the library board trustees, tried to make my opinions known about it, but, um, but, but she definitely knows how I feel. And, um, she, she did ask me for a list of conservative books, because she doesn't have, you know, any thoughts on that, so I gave her a list of conservative books, and she bought three. Um, you know, and I wanted her to buy more, obviously.
So how many books are, how many books are on the other side? How many, yeah, how many, how many liberal books would you say are displayed there that, I mean, what's the?
Well, see, it, it, they're there for about a week, and then they're rotated down to the non, nonfiction part of the library.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a huge, well, I mean, downstairs is a very, we have a very small library. So I would say, I mean, I didn't count them, but I'd say, you know, hundreds and hundreds.
What does she replace, when she puts those downstairs, what does she replace them with?
More, more.
More of the same?
More of the same.
Same but different, just?
Yeah, the same but different.
Yeah.
Yeah, same but different, and, um, there's never one, one, um, uh, and this, this is things like Green New Deal, or for instance, when the, when the, um, presidency was going on and everything, there'd be some very harsh, to me upsetting books, you know, you know, 'cause I'm, I'm a Republican.
Yep.
I'm conservative. And, uh, so, um.
So you're looking for balance.
Looking for balance.
Balance.
Looking for parity.
Right.
Looking for e, equality. If she buys one of those, she should buy one of the other, I feel. And that goes for that display. You know, there's so many left-wing books downstairs that it's impinging on other, there's other things besides political things, and it's impinging on everything, there's so, so many.
The three books that she bought, did she display them?
Uh, she, she finally did, yes. See, one of them, of course, is, I asked Mark Levin's, uh, American Marxism, which I don't know if you're familiar with, but that book is so popular. It was number one even on the New York Times Bestseller List, believe it or not, um, that, um, there's a great demand for it. So, and there's a great demand for it because the libraries won't buy it. See, they won't buy conservative things, so therefore it's always out. You know, it's always out. And, and you can go to another library, and I, I'm waiting now for that book from the Westbrookfield Library, and I've been waiting for like a month. So, you know, there's a, there's a demand for these conservative books. There's a lot of wonderful conservative books, and I really think, think that we should, um, you know, the textbook.
Yeah, and beyond parity, um, you have to, you have to realize that Northbrook Field, as a number of surrounding communities, lean heavily conservative. So you're not even catering to your own people, so.
Why you said that to her? I said, you know, this. I said, you know, this, this town is a right of center town, and she said, oh, I know. So she knows, but, you know, she just doesn't want to do it.
Is she elected or appointed, the librarian?
She's appointed by us. We just appointed her. The, is the library, what was the group you went to? The library
The trustees, the trustees.
Oh, the library board of trustees.
Yeah. I think they recommend, they are the ones that found her, recommended her to us.
Are they appointed or elected, the trustees? I think they're elected.
They're elected.
They're elected.
Yeah.
Yeah. So maybe that's, I don't know, an avenue to change
Well, she already went there, that's the problem. So I think we should probably send them a letter
Correct.
Demanding that
Well, that's why I'm asking who's elected
Equities.
Who's appointed, because if
Yeah.
You know, when you're elected, you can't just, you can't just be let go until your, the election comes up. But if they're, if they're giving us names through their opinions
Exactly.
Maybe, you know, a letter from us or something
Yeah. Because we, we appoint and employ as town the librarian, so technically she works for the town, which is us.
Right.
So I just think we should write a letter to the board of trustees and to the librarian and telling them that there has to be parity. You buy one leftist center book, you got to buy one right of center book, and they have to be displayed equally and available for our people.
Well, there was a donation not that long ago of a group of books called the Total Twins. Apparently they were never displayed.
Really? Well, it's a good series.
Where did they end up?
Yeah, it is.
Don't know where they ended up.
Yeah.
Well, they probably ended up in the book sale.
Oh, I should go check.
Brand-new books?
I never thought of that. I should check that. I brought the children's section. I brought the Total Twins books in
Oh, see, I haven't gone up
On behalf of, and the girl that was there just kind of wrote a note and put them aside and never seen them. And that was just after Eunice Jones had did a big display and had some really not good books.
What were they, like kids' books?
Yeah.
So would they have been put in the kids' section? Did anybody check to see if they're down?
I haven't. I will go up there. I was going to go check on that.
See if they did get put in the kids' section before we
Book sale.
That's a good series.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Well, we'll, we'll write a letter on behalf of the board
Oh, that would be terrific.
Asking for that
Yes.
Demanding and accounting
Because I did, I did talk to her yesterday, and I said I had some new books. For instance, Molly Hemingway has written a great book, Rigged: How the Media, Big Tech, and the Democrats Seize Our Elections. So she's got one up there, this book titled Frankly, We Did Win the Election: The Inside Story of How Trump Lost. So I said, wouldn't it be great if you bought Molly Hemingway's book and had it right next to that book?
Both of them should be side by side.
And that's when she said, I'm not buying, I've decided I'm not going to buy any political books, because, because, and this is a quote, because they, they become dated and not relevant.
But she did, did just buy that book.
Yeah, I know.
So that, you know, there's a little hypocrisy going on there.
She, she also just bought Peril by Bob Woodward, and I don't know if you're familiar with that. She had, bought like a half a dozen Bob Woodward books. He's been writing vicious stuff on Trump, and he wrote a new one, and
He's been around a while.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Too long.
Did you need some, did you need to say something?
No, I'm good.
All right. All right.
Well, they have conservation, right? Tonight?
Yeah.
Well, and also, you know, to say something is dated and not relevant. You know, Dreams of Our Founding Fathers by Ron DeSantis, how can that book be dated and ever become irrelevant? You know, so it's really hardcore in there, so I would appreciate it if, if it would, because, you know, she told me that other people have complained to her, so
About this?
Yes.
Same complaint? Yeah.
Yeah, about that display that you walk in and it's all very far away, very just, you know, I don't even want
But I believe a lot of the trustees are left-leaning, but
Well, I read, I read your stuff, all the paperwork.
Well, that's where the Democratic Committee meets, is the library, so
Yeah. Well, a lot of people meet in the library, but
Well, yeah.
I get your
That's where their base is.
Yeah, I get your meaning. All right. Anything else?
That's great.
Anything else? We good?
I already said mine, so I'm good.
I know. I grew a beard in the time it took you to
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything? We good?
Are we going to the executive session?
No, I don't see anything on here.
It was nice to meet you.
Since I got your section today, I have no idea why, so. Yeah? I'm taking motion to adjourn.
So we're done?
Yeah. What, what else we got?
No, just the, six-thirty has gone by, so
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you make a motion, Jason?
Yep.
Go second.
On paper?
Bye.
Bye. Good night, everybody.
Everybody, it's just me.